Okay, I'm Chairperson John Brazil. I'm calling the Planning Commission's special meeting to order February 2nd, 2017, and it is three past three. Would you stand and face the flag?
Well, actually, I think we have a roll call.
Well, we can. Yes, I'm sorry. Can you take roll, John?
Chair Brazil.
Here.
Vice Chair Morrell.
Present.
Chairman, Commissioner Boniface. Excused?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
No, he's not here either.
Commissioner Kennedy?
She's not here.
Uh-uh.
Commissioner McHugh?
Aye.
And Commissioner Saint Marie?
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have a quorum?
We have a quorum. Okay. Let's stand and face the flag and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, through the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all. Thank you. And in front of us, we have an agenda, and we will see how well we can do with this. We may not get through the whole thing, but is there any comment or adjustments to the agenda at this time?
Do we need to make a motion to accept the agenda?
I'm asking first, is there any comments or adjustments to the agenda?
That was a comment.
Hearing none, recommend we accept the agenda as posted.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. John, roll.
All those in favor, Chairman Brazil?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Morrell?
Yes.
Commissioner McHugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Saint Marie?
Aye.
You may need that microphone.
Carry.
Okay, roll has been taken, so adopted. We're all the way down to item five, or item six at this point, Commissioner, I'm sorry. Item five, A. Carolyn, would you like to give a briefing?
Certainly. The Planning Commission packet is, before I start on this particular item, the Planning Commission packet is split up by topic, and at the bottom of the page, on each one of these topics, it is numbered, but specifically for the topic only. So, it's a 145-page document. I just felt like that would be an easier way for you to be able to get through it.
Very good.
All right. This first section, the Commission went over last time you met in January, and we got some pretty good direction from you for changes, and I also got comments after the meeting that I thought were pretty good, so I wanted to walk you through these, if I could. There were essentially, let's see, one, two, three, there were four items that came up as issues. The first was the addition under subsection one. There was a sentence that talked about what this, what this would control, the purpose of this section, and the word-
Excuse me, Carolyn, are we talking just about the tsunami hazard overlay?
Yes.
Section one?
We're only on that right now.
Okay.
And besides the new development reference, we also added the repair, reconstruction, or improvements of structures, so that this would apply not only to new development, but to additions and things like that. The code section goes on to identify some standards and criteria on how that, those things could be accomplished for additions and reconstructions. The next one, subsection two, was the discussion about hazardous facilities, and I think the point was made that there are a lot of places that have substances that could be considered hazards, and how could you deal with that? I think we talked specifically about the ports, and so the language that we're suggesting is that, I'm just going to read it, that hazard facility means a structure or a structure with its primary use being to house, support, or contain toxic or explosive substances. Now, the next question's probably going to be, well, what do you mean by primary? Well, I mean, we could go into that and create a definition of primary, but when I think of a primary use for a hazardous facility, I'm thinking about, you know, a place that is stocking chemicals, that's all they do, or, that's kind of where I'm going.
Not necessarily a mixed-use facility?
No. Uh-uh. I'm thinking that's the purpose of why they exist, is to store these hazardous facilities, and maybe there's a better way to say this, but I thought this might work, so that might be worthy of some discussion, to see if this would-
Is that in time?
Yeah, if that would, that would work for everybody.
I would like to see primary taken out.
Just have it stated, "Structures with its use"?
Yes, I would prefer that, because you have things like welding shops, auto repair shops, where they can have large amounts of gas welding equipment, which is very hazardous and very explosive, but that's not the primary use of the structure.
Well, correct, and I, and I think that's where Carolyn was trying to go, is that an auto repair shop, its primary use is an auto repair shop, not a hazardous material storage facility, is that-
My, my point being that they can have sufficient quantities of hazardous materials in that shop to be a hazard to the public, and that would still not be the primary use of that structure.
All right. Any other opinions or discussion on that? And Kevin, I understand where you're going with that, I do. But for-
You make a good point, too, John. Rather than saying primary use, it's use intended to house, support, or contain toxic or explosive substance. I just, I'm not comfortable with the word primary, because the secondary use of storing hazardous materials is just as dangerous as the primary use, although the quantities may be slightly smaller.
I mean, how many, how many facilities are you aware of in your fire district that known hazardous materials are being stored there that are not, that are of concern to you, but are not primary to the business or the structure?
In Port Oxford.
Well, in the tsunami zone, that's an important distinction.
This is, yeah, well, this-
The Empire Business District of Port Oxford is in the tsunami inundation zone, according to the maps.
Right.
All of 101, which is our only business district. I'm willing to not use the point, but I'm not comfortable with the word primary, and I'd rather say it's intended use.
I-
Uh, yeah.
I mean, you-
You know, it's, it's intended use does have some good meaning to it that I can see, because if that's what their intention is to do that, because another facility type, their primary, and let's go back to the auto shop, their primary could be auto repair, but 90% of the stuff that they're storing is hazardous material. So what is their intended use?
Auto repair.
Auto repair. But their primary would also still be auto repair, right? I don't know. Hazardous material.
We can leave it alone. I'm okay. We can leave it as currently worded on page one.
You guys comfortable with that? Any other-
I'm okay with that.
All right.
So you want to leave it as is?
We're going to leave it as it is. Thanks, Kevin, for bringing that up.
Apologies, you, Director Johnson, I'm slowing this down.
No, no, you're not.
No, no.
I don't want you to rush through it, and you're good, you're good.
Okay.
This next, this next one was very interesting, and this was brought up by-
Subsection 2D.
Yeah, subsection 2D, talking about the definition of substantial improvement, and the way the code is written now, it talks about substantial improvement being defined as if you exceed 50% of the value of the property, something like that, and so, that's, it looks really good on paper, but the problem is, when you go to administer that-
Who establishes the value?
Well, the building official, or myself, and we have to say, okay, well, now you've got to go get an appraisal, want to know what the value is now, and then what will the value be if you do this addition? So, there's, and appraisals are, they're kind of, well, they're as objective as they can be, but, you know, from appraiser to appraiser, things can be different. It's just, it's a cumbersome way, I think, to establish what's called a substantial improvement. But the definition that's, that I'm proposing basically would say, if you repair, you reconstruct or improve your structure, over 50% of the floor area of its existing, you know, the existing square footage that you have, that's when it would, you know, this would kick in. And I've, I've seen also in other definitions where they include height. If you, if you have a single story, a substantial improvement, they'll use this definition, but they say you have to stay within the existing building height, so that's, it's something I'd like you to discuss.
I think building height is superfluous to it if you're saying you cannot exceed 50% of the pre-existing square footage of the floor.
Uh-huh.
If you add a second floor, you're going to exceed that, or you're going to be within that. I made the comment to you, Director Johnson, that this wording is what Port Oxford recently adopted as part of its parking ordinance, because a 50% retail value doesn't include the possibility of a, of someone buying a small restaurant, replacing the entire kitchen and all of its utensils and cold storage in there, which can easily exceed 50% of the value of the structure without altering the structure. So we want with a 50% of the floor space of the existing structure in our recent ordinance.
Okay, this is John Brazil. I got, I would almost like to take the word floor out, and to where it would be 50% of the area of the existing structure. There again, Kevin, let's say that someone wanted to put a second story on it, but not a second-story floor. The square footage would still remain the same, but the volume of the structure would increase by more, twice, twice as much. And in the size of the area of the existing structure, or the size of the structure, is what, what I'm kind of concerned with.
I understand if I were to add a second story to this house, but have it open, just a loft-like structure up there.
Yes.
I would be adding a great deal of area to the house without increasing the footprint.
Correct.
Okay, I understand that.
And again, Kevin, that's from my, from my fire background, is that, you know, we look at water supply and whatnot based off of the area of the structure, the bigger the structure, not necessarily the square footage of walkable space.
I don't have a problem with the chairman.
So if we drop the word floor, Carolyn, how would that work?
That'd be just fine.
So do I have a consensus that we suggest to Carolyn that we drop the word floor? Any other?
Well, the flip, the flip side of substantial improvement is not changing the area at all, but taking the particle board off and putting up marble.
Is that, that's an opinion improvement, I think. I like particle board better than marble.
Yeah, but if an appraiser comes by.
Well, that may change the value of the property, but are we concerned with the value of the property in a hazard overlay zone, or are we concerned with the structure and the safety of the structure?
I think the latter.
Mm-hmm.
And the way this is framed, this really only addresses things, this really only addresses the matter if you're adding on to something. If you're changing out your roof, or you're replacing-
That's a replacement.
-your crummy old Formica with granite, or you're repairing some windows and putting in new windows, you're not, you're not even touching that, that area, I mean, the floor area, or, yeah.
Area of the building.
So did we, were we talking about 35% at other places in the code? As far as substantial improvement?
Yeah, that was somewhere else in the code, and I, we should probably talk about that, too, when we get to that point, but I think-
But if we, if we-
If you want to keep it consistent throughout-
Yeah, if we're, if we're defining what we determine as being a substantial improvement based off of a percentage, I would think we'd want to kind of have the same percentage throughout the code. Kevin, what do you think?
I would agree.
All right, so-
When we get to that other section, we'll pull that at 35%, because I think I brought it up later in that other section, that in other parts of the code, it's 50, and, and I can't remember what it was for. It was one of these other ones.
So everybody kind of keep that in their mind as far as where we might want to go with that.
Okay.
If we settle at 42 and a half, oh, well. No.
Okay.
All right, Carolyn, go ahead.
This last one, subsection six, it, it had not included the word development, and when you're prohibiting uses, those uses are typically tied to development, so you can say, I'm not going to allow this certain thing, but this thing that you would want to do is tied to a building that you're going to have the thing in, and that's why I'm throwing in this word development, so it's kind of a tidy up.
Could you explain that just a little bit better for me, Carolyn, because, you know, uses, development is a use. So how does that tidy it up a little bit?
Well, if you go to-
If you look at that differently?
Sure. Well, if you go to page 4 of 41, it's at the bottom of the page, it says prohibit uses, and then I added the words "and" development. Unless authorized in accordance with subsection three, the following development and uses are prohibited in the specified portions of the tsunami hazardous overlay zone, and then it talks about hospitals, fire stations, building, colleges, well, let's-
Now, Carolyn?
Yes.
I'm okay at that point, that, that's not only for clarity, but it's also for consistency. I can see the point now.
Okay. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
All right, so in this section, the changes that I've gotten direction on is we're going to retain the word primary under section 2B, and in section 2D, we're going to drop the word floor. So, that then, if the Commission is comfortable, when I, when you see this next time, it will be attached to a resolution for you to adopt, that will be recommending the Board adopt these changes wholesale, okay? So I won't be bringing this back to you again unless it's, until it's in its final form, attached to a resolution, so.
Okay. So to help Carolyn out here, and just saying, is one last go-around, does anybody have any other thoughts on this overlay zone that we should pass on to Carolyn at this time? Otherwise, we're going to be seeing a finished product being, coming in front of us next time. Now's, now's the opportunity.
I have no further comments, John.
Thank you.
I don't either.
Good.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Gone once, twice, three times.
Moving on to coastal hazards, this is a little bigger.
Oh, Carolyn, excuse me, let me backtrack. I think overall, and maybe Carolyn did say that earlier, on most of the maps and stuff that have been presented, Carolyn is going to make those available in a-
Electronic format.
Electronic format-
Make sure you get them.
For any of us that need to, or whatever.
Will they be full-size, Carolyn?
I hope so.
Well, they'll be as big as you want them to be if I send them to you electronically, so if you want to blow them up on 11 by 17, you can.
No, I just meant that the ones that are in the packet have been reduced to you, where you can't read them. If they're going to be the original documents, then yes, I understand. I can change them around.
Yeah, you can change them up at home.
Yep, that's what the intent would be. All right, Carolyn, we're going to move on to coastal hazard overlay zone.
Yes. Okay, this is, there's a little more to this. The, the comments I received here, Commissioners Saint Marie and Donna Colby-Hanks provided comments the week of January 22nd, very helpful, and there's also things in here that the Commission talked about, and then there's things as well that I'm suggesting. The subsection one, again, talks about substantial improvement. This is really the same discussion that you just had in the tsunami area.
And, go ahead.
And this is a 50%. And this also-
I'd like you to remove the word floor in here again.
Floor, okay. The next subsection four, I included the word development. It had a reference to a permit, and I think what the, the direction I got from the Commission after our discussion last time is that we want to avoid creating new permits, and what we do when we process applications here for development, there's a couple of ways things happen. If you have an outright permitted use, that the zoning code says it's permitted outright, you start out down in the Building Department, they take your building permit application, and they give it to the Planning Department, and she creates something that's called a planning clearance. And that planning clearance, basically, she goes through the zoning code to make sure that what's being shown on the building code also meets the planning requirements. Now, under this scenario, if you're in a coastal hazard overlay zone, she's not only going to look at what's in your underlying zone, whether you're in an R1 zone, and you can have a building height of 35 feet and a setback of five feet, she's going to see, oh, this is in a coastal hazard overlays, this is in a coastal hazard overlay zone, so all of the requirements in this chapter also will apply. So she will go through the application and go, well, you were supposed to have a geologist's report, you're supposed to have this, you're supposed to have that, and you don't have it. I'm sorry. Building permit process stops until you get that. Now, that's one way things get processed. Another way things get processed is the way the zoning code's written, it says you can have those outright permitted uses that I just talked about, or you have what's called a conditional use permit. And those are things that, there's a staff report written, and it gets mailed to the Western World, and, you know, it's a bigger deal. And so, in that case, we would also pull this up and check the application against this, and we would include it in the report that we send out to the public, you know, it's in this coastal hazard area, and it has to comply with these certain criteria. And then it comes back, and we approve it, and before they can get their building permit, there may be things they have to do, like have the geologist stamp things, or review things, or inspect things. So that's the other way to do it. You also recently adopted a new type of permit called a permitted uses permit, and it's basically the same as a conditional use permit, but there's some types of land uses that are not as intense as what you're having a conditional use permit address, that would allow you to have this other type of permit. It's basically the same process that I just described, but it's a shorter period of time for review, things like Cottage Industries, and, there's a few others. We've only been able to apply it to forest grazing and ag, because that's all you've updated so far, and those still, that's still not complete, but that's a whole nother story. I'll tell you under Director Comments, but, so that's the process under which all this criteria would be addressed. Now, the way it originally been put together, it called for coastal hazard overlay zone permit, which would mean, when you came in for a planning clearance, which is the most simple way, Nancy would tell you, oh, you need a coastal hazard permit, we're going to have to route this to everybody, comments, et cetera, and we, I could really see a potential for conflict between saying, oh, but it's a permitted outright use, but, but wait, no, you have to have a special permit. So that's why I want to call it criteria that you'll have to comply with before you can get your, your building permit. That's a long-winded way, but I think I needed to lay that out, because it's really related to processing. So that's what I'm suggesting, and it talks about it a little more in the text, in a much more concise way than I just delivered it, but-
Yeah.
Are you, is the Commission comfortable with that approach?
It looks to me that once the permitting process then is really started, it's going to be more fluent, because these pieces would have come in together upfront.
Yes.
And I think that, I think that's a good thing.
I agree with Commissioner Brazil. I think it's going to be much easier for, for the applicants to get through this process, as well as much easier on the planning staff. I think it's, me personally, I think it cleans it up a lot, it took down a lot of extraneous material. You already know it's going to go through the process if it's in the coastal hazard overlay zone, so I like that approach.
But at the end of, end of the day, the same standards are being met.
Yes.
Which is the ultimate goal?
So as it circulates, it would circulate through the same people, and it would be identified as being in the coast, you have a coastal hazard overlay zone?
Yes.
Okay. So all you're doing is removing the separate permit, basically, but the approval process would remain the same?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sensing everybody's comfortable with this approach.
We're comfortable.
Okay, good.
I'm okay.
I'm going to mark that off, then.
All right.
This next item was a typo that we repaired-
Quote.
On subsection 4B, top of page two.
Thank you.
Subsection 4B, VA and B. We exempted this, there's some exemptions in this section for beach or dune areas that you wouldn't have to get this, a permit for, or you, I'm sorry, you wouldn't have to meet the criteria that we just went over. And what I'm doing is suggesting that you replace the items that are noted under Staff Comment. It talks about removal of trees smaller than eight inches, removal of trees larger of eight, than eight inches, in diameter breast height, provided the canopy area of the tree that are removed, is not removed in one-year period, is less than 25% of the lot, yard area vegetation maintenance on slopes less than 25%. Honestly, I don't have the resources to verify all this type of information, and I think it's pretty cumbersome on an applicant to do that as well, but I think that it's fair to say that we would be willing to exempt, on paper, anyway, the removal of vegetation for somebody to go out and do a geology report, and typical landscaping and gardening, I mean, I think that really kind of encompasses these three things that I'm suggesting you drop out of the current language. So these would be exempt from the criteria of this section.
On the wording, typical landscaping and gardening, that's not specific enough. That opens too much interpretation, I believe.
Would you have an alternative word?
No, but I hope the Commission will help me come up with one. I'm happy with the, the way it was written before, where we're specifying tree gird. I understand the county doesn't have the horsepower to actually do that, but it's kind of like if we write it there, and somebody does it, and something goes wrong, well, you know, we're covered, whereas if we say typical landscaping, and they clear out half of the property, and they, it suddenly just- it suddenly just washes away, or slides down into the sea, then I'm not sure the county has covered itself sufficiently.
I tend to agree with Commissioner McHugh that it's better to leave the language in there, even if we recognize at this point in time, we don't have the resources to cover it. Sure that it's occurred that way.
Okay, this is John Brazil. My comment on this, Carolyn, is I, too, am more comfortable with kind of what we have. What is being suggested, like on VA, undeveloped properties, removal of vegetation necessary for engineering geologists to examine the property, dah dah dah. I don't know what necessary is, and I don't know what the time limits are. Can they do that 12 times a year, once every five years? And then on B, typical landscaping. Just in my district, I experienced that with ODOT's interpretation of taking care of vegetation growth alongside the road and whatnot. It's their choice of landscaping that doesn't necessarily meet the accessibility to facilities that my fire district needs to act. So what one person might choose to be their landscaping vision is entirely, could be entirely different than someone else's landscaping choice.
Okay.
So I'm, I-
You want to leave the language in as it is?
I would just as soon leave the language in myself, and not go with that other, what the suggested language.
This is Commissioner McHugh again. I don't have a problem with the suggested language on Section A, undeveloped property, removal of vegetation necessary for an engineering geologist. I understand, John, your concerns about that, but I would find it unusual that an engineering geologist would go in or clear 12 or 13 or 14 times.
I agree.
I'm willing to be talked out of that. It just seems like A is okay, that we tell them an engineering geologist can remove the vegetation necessary?
But, you know, I guess my point is, you know, and I just said that, like, are they going to do it 12 times in a year, or is it once a year, or whatever? What is necessary, and how many geologists are going to look at the same piece of property?
I have a problem-
I have a vision of all these geologists coming in until the entire property is cleared. No, it's necessary to do the next four feet over.
I don't know, I'm just, that's, that's where it confuses me on it.
Well, my personal experience is that a geologist makes a visit and determines what area he needs cleaned, he or she needs cleaned off, and that's taken care of. And I've not been, I've not seen where they have to come back in a second time to do additional clearing.
And if the property is sold with no new development, the next person-
Well, if they've already taken off the vegetation from the previous owner-
Is it the same vegetation that the next geologist hired?
Well, it hasn't been 40 years. It should be.
Okay, all right.
I have, I have an issue with putting, with requiring things that we cannot enforce, no matter what the topic is.
The way this county is running, I think it's, we're up against it.
I know, I know.
But, you know, again, I-
But we hope, we hope that we have a way to maybe be able to solve that here in some period of time, not to ble, you know. We have that issue in our county right now, but we shouldn't have. We should have a resource capability to minimally on a complaint basis.
When I went through this with the previous planning director, his response was that if trees are being cleared beyond the original building permit, where they have, we're giving them, you can clear this much area, they clear additional trees, State Department of Agriculture that are coming in and enforcing that. I don't know if that. And we tell them, here's your, here's your building site footprint, which is obviously larger than the house. The people start removing trees beyond that, Department of Agriculture enforces.
I mean, this is a long-
Is that a problem with us? I mean, is that how it's done now, Carolyn? Because we do have restrictions on tree removal on our standards already, our ordinance is already.
Where are they?
Well, I'll go back through them if you want.
That'd be-
I don't know exactly where they are, but yes, they are right here.
That'd be helpful for me, because I, I didn't believe that we did regulate tree removal, except for areas in the public right of way. I might have missed it in the zoning code, I might have, but, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good, I would appreciate that, Kevin. That'd be good.
Yeah, I'll send you information tomorrow, whether it can or cannot find.
Okay, excellent. Well, what I'm kind of hearing among the four of you is that you'd like to leave in the three bullet points, and you kind of like A above, but it would be better if A was somehow qualified. That's what I'm hearing from one of you, anyway. And perhaps we could, you could qualify it. You could say on undeveloped properties, removal of vegetation necessary for engineering geologists to examine a property to develop a geologic report once every-
Five years?
Five years.
I could buy that.
Would that work for you, Commissioner McHugh, too?
Yes.
And actually, I would suggest every three years, because you don't, you don't know what kind of erosion rate you might be looking at, that people want to get some verification.
That's a good point. We have lots down here that move 10, 15 feet a year. So that's a good point.
Would that be all right, every three years?
Yes.
Yes, it'll be all right. I'll, I'll go with that.
So I'm going to strike out the B, and I'm going to add, I'm going to leave in what I already have in there about undeveloped properties, but add the words every three years at the end of it. And I'm going to add back these three bullet points that I had taken out. Okay?
Okay.
Carolyn, it would be okay with me if, as you add the three bullet point bit back in. If you wanted to consider qualifying that on complaint. You know, so you're not driving around checking properties, but if somebody says, hey, they're removing big trees over here, then you would-
Isn't it implicit in the code, just the fact that it's there?
Well, it's implicit in our practice that we only respond on complaint basis.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
Subsection 4B.
Yeah, this section, Donna Colby-Hanks brought this up, and I thought it was a good point, that to add farm uses as being exempt from the criteria for a, in this coastal hazard overlay zone. And it kind of makes sense, you know, unless you're, if you have a farm area that's in this, and it's a permitted outright use. Her point was, do these requirements really need to, need to apply? So I thought it was a good point, but-
It's a good point. Does it require qualifications, that if you're using the land strictly for agricultural purposes, and you're not building barns and sheds and houses in that zone? Are you okay with farm use?
I think that, that's really a good point. And to drive that point home, I think it would be good if we referenced the ORS definition, which is down below. 215.203.2A. Which you can read. But, you know, now that you bring that up, and I'm looking at the definition, it all really looks good until you get to the very last sentence that says farm use includes onsite construction and maintenance of equipment and facilities for use for the activities described in this subsection. So maybe it would be better if I, if this word farm use, instead it just said the following farm uses, and then you, and I could just cut and paste this definition, but drop off this last sentence. Because if you are going to be building a farm, you know, an ag building of some kind, you want to have that building comply with this criteria, right?
Yes. Well, onsite construction, is that talking about construction of?
Onsite construction and maintenance of equipment and facilities.
Well, I understand the maintenance of equipment, but is it construction of equipment?
Construction and maintenance of equipment and facility, it's kind of a, it's poorly written.
And facilities, I see.
Yeah, it's kind of poorly written, but I can't take credit for that.
I can't describe it.
It's out of state regs. But farm use includes the onsite construction and maintenance of equipment and facilities used for the activities described in this subsection. I think that-
Because we have it in our current code, that you can have a residential structure on farm zone.
No, we do, but you have to have a conditional use permit. And you can have an ag building, which often gets turned into a house, you can have that without a conditional use permit. And what I'm saying is that if you are in this coastal hazard overlay zone-
Right.
And you really don't want to exempt a farm building, or an ag building from these. But you would, I would think it'd be reasonable to exempt, you know, you know, having your horses run around, or growing cranberries, or whatever. I think what bothers me is this last sentence about the construction maintenance of facilities. So I-
You can either quote it, or you could say farm use does not, as used herein does not include.
Yeah, I could do that.
I agree with you, the last sentence is problematic, but other than that, everything in the ORS 215.203.2A is acceptable farm use in a hazard zone.
Okay. So do we want to add those words on that last sentence, instead of removing the sentence after farm use does not?
The problem is you're citing a specific section.
Yeah, I would agree with Director Johnson's approach.
Well, let me try one more thing. What if you would say farm use as described in ORS 215.203.2A, identified as a use permitted outright in any zoning district, but somewhere in here, you pull out the onsite construction and maintenance. You could do it early on in the sentence, you could say farm use is identified in section blah blah blah, except for onsite construction and maintenance of equipment and facilities. And then you do a period, and then you say, this type of farm use would be exempted as it would be permitted outright in the zoning district, or something like that. I'm trying to make it simple, so I'm not having four paragraphs of words. I'm getting a little clumsy.
Except for onsite construction and maintenance of equipment and facilities.
Oh, that's good.
Farm use is defined by, let me pull that one.
Does that work?
It'd work for me.
Okay.
I'm so glad you're here.
Yes, me too.
Yeah.
You are a-
Kevin, you good with that?
Oh, yes, yes.
Great, great.
This one, I am going to want you to look at one more time. I want you to, I'll point it out to you when I bring you the resolution.
I wish I had been your student.
Yeah, that's good.
I'd be so much better at this.
All right, 4C and 4D. Again, this is where I've changed the language, so it will be dealing with criteria rather than a permit.
Right.
Same thing that we discussed before.
I'm good with it.
4D 6. This is one we really kind of struggled with. When you have a, we have to file one of these hazard disclosure statements. We want to say where you could find it in the future, and that's why we added the words community development department, so it will be housed in our department. There are some places that will make you record that instrument, or that report against the property, and then it's on your title. And property owners hate that, because they feel like it clouds their title. Property buyers love it, because they can then see, oh, I'm in a hazard overlay zone. You know, it's a difficult nut to crack. I mean, because people always want to come back and say, oh, my realtor said I could do dah dah dah, and you will say, did you check, was it on the title report? Did you come to the planning department? They're more likely to read the title report-
Yes.
-than come to the planning department. But it was really, it's, it's difficult, because it's very unpopular with people. So, not that we're here to win popularity contests, but I'm saying-
Well, it's unpopular with which people? The owners?
It's unpopular, unpopular with owners, because-
The current owners.
Yeah.
Well, the current owners know that they're now in the zone, right?
No, not yet.
No, because their title report, their title report didn't tell them.
Right, right. They're all going to find out when we mail out the Measure 56 notices, but that's when you'll hear the comments.
I would like, myself, I would like to see it on the title report.
Okay.
Because many transactions and stuff, should, I believe, in some cases, should be covered on the title report, but it's not, and nobody says anything. And this here, if the property is in a hazard zone, I think we would be prudent to the buyer to make that vehicle easy to be disclosed. If the guy's selling something, but don't want to tell the buyer what he's really selling, I don't think that's our issue. I think it's our issue to have records easily available that the buyer knows what he's mining.
Well, the buyer will find that out if the person selling it to him had something, an addition, or did something to build on the property that would have required this.
Over 50%, or initially.
No, period. For instance, if I have a house in a coastal hazard overlay zone, I may not know that. And then I go to sell it, I didn't have anything done to it, and the buyer, buyer's not going to know it either, unless the year before I sold it, I came in here and I got a permit, and then I recorded it. So you're going to catch some people with it.
But going forward, if it was on the title report, going forward, any new transactions for property-
Yes, that's true.
Then the owners will know it.
The buyer would know it, and, well, yeah, and the owner couldn't get his, couldn't get their building permit, he'd have finalled and signed off until he had it recorded.
I'm in agreement with John on this one, and having it filed in the table is probably the best idea.
I think that if you want to start out with that as a requirement, I think that would be fine. When those Measure 56 notices come out, and this is in front of the board for their hearings, it's likely going to come up. The LCD was very, they've seen this all over, up and down the coast, they've said it's a difficult matter. But that's okay.
So, I, I'd like to run it that way myself.
Measure 56 is?
I'm not sure.
A Measure 56 notice- A Measure fifty-six notice, and I just learned this, is a notice that we have to send to people before we're going to change the zoning code if it will potentially affect the value of their property. Which is why, yeah.
Well, we're going to be sending that anyway, based off of-
Excuse me.
A lot of those.
I don't have a clear consensus yet.
My consensus, this is John Brazil, I'd like to see it appear in the title report.
I agree with John, this is Commissioner Riquel.
Any other input?
I'm not seeing one way or the other as being a strong, if the property owners currently are going to get this notice, and that's coming from the planning department?
Yes.
So then the concern becomes if they turn, turn around and sell their property, how's that owner going to be aware of this?
How's the buyer going to be here?
Or the buyer is going to be aware of this? I'm thinking with John that they, it would be in a title report that I would think that would be, like, I don't think they would turn to the planning department to see if there were any thing they should know about a piece of property.
Could, could somebody developing a title report find this information in separate documents, or?
Only if they came to, only if they came here, they pulled up the address, they looked at the application, and on the bottom it said, you know, there was a-
The title company-
Hazard report filed with the depart-, this department here.
And do, do they do that regularly?
No.
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 That's the problem.
So the, essentially, the only way a potential buyer would be informed that they're in this zone would be if we adopt this now.
Well, if we adopt it for it to be on the title report.
Yeah.
If we don't do that, the only way that a potential buyer would be informed, they wouldn't be informed, they would have to go look to see if there was something out there to find, like to the planning department.
And the normal agencies in place to support them would typically not pursue that.
Well, I mean, Karen isn't here, but, you know, she could speak for the realty world as to how diligent they are. Some realtors are not. They'll, you know, and then these poor people come in after they've spent a lot of money and say, well, my realtor told me, and you're saying, well, you should have come and seen us.
They, they-
And that, that happens all the time. The thing is, when we bought this house, we had the title company specifically look for building permits. And they will come back and say, oh, yeah, there is a building permit that, to put this on the property. That doesn't come back and say, that's not me coming down there and going through a big file and saying, oh, my goodness, this is in a hazard overlay zone. The title company wouldn't discover it either unless it's in the title.
Right.
So you could do all kinds of diligence as a buyer and still not know that you're in a hazard overlay zone. I, I agree they should be in the title, the title company would then find it.
And you, and you guys know my other position on that, is a lot of realtors will sell a piece of property, and then six months later, the property owner says, oh, well, they told me I lived in Brookings, and I thought I had fire protection, when, when they don't live in Brookings and they don't have fire protection. So I like this would be on the title.
Okay. If it was going to be, if that's the direction you want to go, then I would revise this to say all applications for new development or substantial improvements in the hazard, coastal hazard overlay zone shall be recorded against the property title prior to a final inspection for a building permit. That gives them time to do all the paperwork to file this while the construction could be going, but we just won't final it and let them, you know, say it's complete, and a lot of times their financing is dependent on some of their finance. So I think that, that might do the job, but-
But if you, if you're buying bare land for the potential of future development, if you're speculating on a piece of property, there would be no construction, there would be no permit.
True.
And there would be, under your wording, nothing in the title.
That's true.
Because it, okay.
I paid a million dollars for a hunk of property and found out I can only use part of it because it's in a hazard zone, and then the property was overpriced. And I would not know that if there had been no activity against the property.
Well, here's my dilemma then. The process that I described to you before about the planning clearance, that's all tied to a building permit. The other process of a conditional use permit, if you worded this and you said that you had to file this against the property before we gave you your conditional use permit, which is good for a couple of years, which means you can sit on it, get your financing and build later, that, that language would work here. We could say recorded against the property title prior, prior to the issuance of a conditional use permit. What it's not-
Prior to sale.
What?
Say-
Prior to sale.
Prior to sale.
Yes.
But what if you're not selling your property?
Well, and prior to sale, is what he's saying.
But then how do I know that they recorded it? They sign off, they get their, they get their move, they've moved in, they have this hazardous, they have this hazardous disclosure statement, and they, they live in it for five years. I mean, I'm not going to be around to go, and I'm not going to know when they sell the property, to check to see if they recorded it before they sold. But what I'm saying is, if you-
Well, when they move, well, okay.
If you, if you-
When they moved in, they got a conditional, or excuse me, got a certificate of occupancy, right?
Are we talking bare land though?
Well, it was.
Yes, yes, Kevin, Kevin's-
Kevin's example.
On the bare land, brought that up, which is inclusive in this whole process here.
There's no, there's like, there's no connection between my department and the assessor's office when property changes hands. There's no system-
Have it filed in both places then, or?
How do I, how, but how do I, how do I monitor what happens at that other office? I guess what I'm suggesting is that be, in the case of a conditional use permit, before we hand you that conditional use permit, you have to show us that you've recorded this at the assessor's office. And that works if you needed a conditional use permit.
But let's go back to me buying a piece of property that's in a hazardous overlay zone, and then I come in for a conditional use permit, and that's when I find out I'm in a hazard zone? And I want to know that when I buy that property, Karen.
Well, then you should come see the planning department before you buy the property, which most-
Nobody does.
Most people don't.
Well, but I mean, I can't control that. But what I'm saying is, requiring it before we issue the conditional use permit will work.
Yeah.
But it's not going to work if you already live on the property and it's an outright permitted use, and I can give, you can go through the planning clearance process and get your building permit. In that case, we would want you to record it before we gave you the final. So I guess I could write it in two ways. If you're, if you end up having to go down this road, you have to record it before I issue the conditional use permit. If you end up going down the planning clearance road, you have to record it before I issue the building permit. And I'd love to be able to tie it to the sale, because that would, that would be way more helpful, but from, within my little world, that's, I think that's the best I could do. But I think traveling those two paths in this code and writing it that way, I think that would do the job.
I think the third path is necessary. They have to file it with, with the title. And then the parts that you have control over is that they have to-
But as, as a plant, as a planning department, we have no jurisdiction on that part. Someone can sell bare land and make that transaction, the assessor knows about it, but planning department, we have no clue.
Well, I understand, that's why I said that that would be an add it on section. But the two sections that the director mentioned are fine, but an additional requirement in there that you have to file it with the assessor's office, too.
I think we can capture that. I think I can-
That covers the bare land, and it also covers, you know, what, what he, sales of existing structures, but it certainly covers conditional or permitted use.
Well, I'll give it a shot, but when I bring the resolution to adopt this back to you, let's revisit it, because I want you to feel comfortable with how I write it.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Who is our community development director?
Me.
Back this way again.
Oh.
My title was changed.
She's, she's been volunteering for more and more. I just love this girl.
So why does it read that way instead of planning director, or are you no longer?
Because that's the title that they've set up for the manager for this department. Yeah.
So you're not no longer in charge of planning, but you're in charge of development?
I, I am still in charge of planning, planning, building, and economic development.
And economic development.
Right, that's why, that's where the switch came.
Okay, cool. Carolyn, what's next?
Um. I had, the original language had not listed the, the correct references under six C and six E. And it also had included language about-
I'm sorry, Carolyn, where, where are you?
On the bottom of page three of twenty-three.
Yeah.
It had originally, subsection four E.
Four, four, not six, okay.
It had originally talked about approval of a coastal hazard permit. And so I've changed that language, saying-
Or.
It had talked about a coastal hazard permit, and remember, we're getting away from that and saying, you know, if you go through and you get a conditional use permit or a planning clearance, you have to comply with the standards of this section.
Yeah, okay, I'm good with that.
That's what we did above, correct?
Yes, and you're going to see that throughout here.
I'm okay.
Yeah. And then four G. This eliminates the requirement again for coastal hazard permit and simply ties the requirements for compliance of this section to the conditional use permit or the planning clearance. This next one-
We're good, section five.
Subsection five was this, the requirement for geologic report, the standards for that. And Donna Colby Hanks brought this up about the, the, part of the criteria that you need to include in the analysis is an evaluation of the history of the site and the surrounding areas, and she suggested adding-
The five hundred?
She, she just said, what, what does the surrounding area mean? And in my experience, when, in working on bluff top properties, a lot of times a geologist will go, he'll look five, five to eight hundred feet on either side, because, and, and most of that experience was related to people putting in seawalls, because they just, you know, you could put them in on two ends of a property, but you got to remember that they're attaching to properties that may have a different geological substrate or whatever. So I thought that five hundred feet, five hundred feet is pretty generous, actually, but I think that that's, that's good.
Pretty generous, how?
Well-
Do you think it should be larger, or do you think it's pretty big?
Um, I think it's pretty big, but, but you guys need to catch me here if I'm falling. I come from a place where a standard sized lot is fifty by a hundred.
Right.
So five hundred feet, to me, is ten lots. But the bluff top lots in this area, they're, they're probably more than, they're probably, I know they're more than fifty feet wide.
Sure, and they could be acres wide, and what I like about the five hundred feet, if it happens to be a large section of property, twenty acres or something up against a block, it would validate that if, if the property lines are mismarked, and they're missed by ten feet or a hundred feet or something, at least you won't be imposing on a neighbor's property without having this report when you build something.
And I'm learning that. I, I interact with the surveyor quite a bit, and I'm learning that. Property lines are everywhere and nowhere.
And this, this is triggered on a permit, right?
This is triggered on review of, of, a permit, yeah.
Yeah. J L R-
I don't have a problem with five hundred feet. I like the idea of adding a distance, I, I like the suggestion. I'm okay with five hundred feet. I'd be okay if we wanted to change it, just as long as we have that distance requirement in there.
Okay.
If you want to, if you want to negotiate a smaller number or something, but I wouldn't go below three hundred feet in our realm, and-
I think five hundred's fine.
I just assumed-
I wouldn't go below five hundred, John.
All right, then we're good. We'll stay there, move on.
Uh, the subsection six, again, this is deleting the requirement for coastal hazard permit and replacing it with requirement, the requirements of all the things that are in the code, rather than tying it to the, a coastal hazard permit. Subsection seven, and this one was really a doozy for me, because I told you at your last meeting, we were talking about, we were talking about minimum oceanfront setbacks. And it identified on the top of page five of twenty-three that you have to setback under A, a setback specified in a required engineering geology report, or on bluff back shorelines, a setback from the bluff edge, a distance of fifty times the annual erosion rate, as determined by an engineering geologist, plus twenty feet. The bluff edge shall be as defined in, in required geologic report. So in other words, the geologist says, I recommend this is the number, or we go by a retreat rate that he comes up with, whichever one is going to be bigger. So first of all, we, again, we got rid of the, the coastal hazard permit requirement and just tied it to the conditional use permit.
Right, we're good with that piece.
And then they added an introductory statement that this is related to ocean bluff top properties. And then we get into the really gnarly discussion about what's the definition of, of a bluff edge. Now, I contacted all the coastal counties in Oregon. It was Lincoln, Tillamook, there's a little bit of Douglas County, Coos County. I heard back, not from all of them, and none of them had a definition of a bluff edge.
Or a high watermark, or a vegetation line, or a beachfront, yeah.
So I went to my handy California Coastal Commission definition, which I've laid out here on two pages. And I, I really, I included this, but then I got to thinking, you know, there must be some reason why Oregon hasn't adopted something like this. It's either, it's, it's either, it hasn't been considered, which I seriously doubt, because this seems like the planning capital of the Western United States. Or they discarded the, the idea for some reason. Now, I, I talked to DLCD, and they said, well, look at your shoreline section, and I did, and it kind of didn't really work, but I don't know, the, the more I thought about it, and I kept revisiting this, I, I think at this point, we should leave it as is. This was suggested by DLCD, and I mean, they run, they oversee the planning work of every coastal county in this state. And I got to believe that, you know, if they were recommending this, there must have been a good reason.
So the, so the geologist is going to define what that is?
Well, it says a setback specified in a required engineering report, geologist report. Or, now, but, but you have to consider that one, because this is, that would lead you to believe, well-
That's what the twenty foot variance, I think, is, is in here, is that-
Yeah.
One geologist may say it's there, the other guy could be eighteen feet different. I think that's what the idea of the twenty- think that's what the idea of the 20 feet is at some point, and, and the, and the responsibility to establish that is going to be the engineered geologist, or the geologist engineer, I should say. So, I'm, I've looked at this one here quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
Myself, and like I say, I, I know it's all over the place. It's, it's messy, and I've interacted with four other state agencies.
Uh-huh.
And they do not, they all have different verbiage, different ideas, but if you walked them out there and said, put a stake where it is, the stakes would be like 40 feet apart. So, I'm kind of agree, Carol. I'm kind of good with that language, and let's live with that language for now. That's my opinion.
And just for my clarification, is that the language that is showing under?
It's on the top of page five.
Seven?
Yeah, seven.
AI.
And double I?
And double I.
I agree with that. I was down here.
Kevin?
I agree with that. If we find it becomes problematic, it can be changed in the future. It is fine.
There you go. That's what I was thinking.
So, the section I?
Yeah, I and double I.
So, the I, the engineering geologic report.
Or.
Could, I mean, that report could say, you know, build it on the edge, no problem, real stable. You don't need a setback.
Seriously? Well, if you look at.
That's how I'm reading it.
But look at the introduction.
If I can get, if I can get an engineer to say that, yeah.
Look at the.
I can hang my toes over it. I can hang 10, you know.
The greatest setback shall be determined.
Yeah, well, the greatest could be zero in one engineer's mind.
No, because I, I is 20 feet. So, it can't be zero. So, you can't be zero.
Should it say in I then that a minimum, a minimum of 20 feet?
No, the preceding A.
Yeah.
Says the greatest. Am I reading that right, Carol?
The requirement that, of the following, the requirement that imposes the greatest setback shall determine the minimum bluff back shoreline setback on a bluff top property.
Okay, so.
Now, you have two things, and you have to go with the greatest of one of these two things.
So, 20 would be the minimum, absolute minimum?
No, it says, it says.
Then 50 times.
It says, yeah, it says, on bluff back shorelines, a setback from the bluff edge, a distance of 50 times the annual erosion rate, as determined by the engineer, plus 20 feet. So, if your annual erosion rate is two, two feet a year.
It's 100 feet.
It's 100 feet, plus 20 feet.
But if it's zero feet a year, then it's 20 feet.
Yeah, that's right. What I'm used to is 100-year bluff retreat, plus 40 feet. And 100 years means that if your geologist says you're going to have a retreat rate at two inches a year, or two, two inches, two feet, times 100 years, that's 200 feet, plus 40 more feet. That's 240 feet.
Where did those numbers just come from?
I just was sharing an experience.
Her, her history in California.
Yeah, that.
Not to mention the state, but somewhat, her history from somewhere else, yes.
Sorry.
I, I actually like that one better than the way it's currently written. I like that to be more stringent.
I, I agree.
I like Carolyn, the example that you gave us, better than 50 times plus 20 feet.
Well, it could say, instead of this.
50, say 100. Is that what you're saying?
No, no, no. What Carolyn said, that based on the 100-year.
Bluff retreat.
Erosion rate.
Erosion, yeah.
Yeah, decrease, then it's 100 times that, the 100-year report, plus 50 feet.
And ours current.
No one can get in there closer than 50 feet. I like that idea.
And ours currently says 50 times of the erosion rate, plus 20 feet.
Yeah, so 50 times the annual erosion rate. I like the idea of putting a window on how far back you have to check. Because 100 years, it may not have moved very much. For five years, it may not have moved very much, but 20 years ago, it might have moved 50 feet all of a sudden.
Yeah, I mean, loss of bluff is very episodic. There's no, it's not like, oh, okay, it's time to drop two inches, it's time to drop six inches. It's boom, it can all go, so.
Yeah.
Well, where did, where did, in your previous history, Carolyn, where did they establish the 100-year rate?
That's why I wanted that bluff edge defined. It was defined from the bluff edge, and that's where I've had trouble finding a definition in Oregon.
Well, it would be tough to go back 100 years in Oregon and find that information anyway, but that should be the criteria. And if the geologist comes back and says, well, we can only find information for the last 10 years, well, then that should be good enough.
I mean, when we were considering the golf course in Port Orford, we had a lot of information from photographs and so forth in that presentation regarding bluff edge, because we were talking about distance of the fairway off the, off the bluff edge. Do you recall how that was determined?
I do recall that, Bob.
No.
What was the standard we were applying there?
We didn't have a standard. They just tossed in some information for us. And I believe they covered 10 years, and they took the average of that.
Yeah, I would not recommend introducing averages here. Don't.
No.
Don't do it. Don't, don't do that.
But I wouldn't mind increasing the number of feet, larger than 20. Again, the, the minimum, absolute minimum standard, you know, 20 feet is, I think, very close for our coastline.
That's scary. I, I mean, if you wanted to go with 100-year bluff retreat, plus, and then add a buffer, I mean, you could certainly do that. And, and that is the.
The standard you were familiar with was how many feet?
100-year bluff retreat, plus, I think in Pismo Beach, it was, yeah, it was 40 feet. But all that, the only difference in that language in this is when it says 50 times the annual erosion rate, that really means 50 years.
Mm-hmm.
Because when you say annual erosion rate, well, annual is one year, times 50, okay, that's a 50-year bluff retreat.
Right.
But that doesn't, that doesn't, that's not specific enough. That's, there's interpretation in there. 50 times, you know, the annual erosion rate for the, for the previous 50 years, that doesn't let them say, well, five years is good enough because that's the least amount of erosion.
At a minimum.
I understand what you're saying, but it can be read more than one way.
Well, I like the idea of increasing it to plus 50 feet or plus 40 feet.
I like 50 feet.
Do you like the 100-year erosion, plus 50, or?
Plus 50.
Okay, so, you're saying, so you're okay with it saying, on bluff pack, back, I'm sorry, a setback from the bluff edge, a distance of 50, 50 times the annual erosion rate, plus 50 feet?
Yeah, that's where we are right now. I think we're all agreeing to the 50 feet. Back to the question that we've asked probably a couple times to ourselves, we understand 50 times, but where do you collect the data, where, where do they get the data for this annual erosion rate?
That's what geologists do. I mean, that's their world.
They, they have that in a secret geologist book someplace, and they can get it. Okay.
They do.
Are there databases that have that information and maps?
Well, plus, they go out to the property and they identify the type of land form, and then they can determine. It's truly a.
Science.
Quite the science, yeah.
I have no problem putting a larger timeline on 100 feet, 100 times the annual erosion rate. I mean, that's for them to figure out, and I don't mind having that longer view.
Would the 100-year erosion rate, plus 50 feet?
150, yeah.
Commissioner McHugh?
No, it'd be 100. Are we saying 100-year erosion rate, or 50 times the annual rate?
Well, 50 times the annual erosion rate, the annual erosion rate is really 50 years.
How do you know?
Annually, that's once a year.
Because that's in their geologist stuff.
Right, but if you, and 100, or you could say 100 times the annual erosion rate, well, then, then that's 100 years. But I think Commissioner McHugh has a good point. You know, the 100-year erosion rate, if you're, if you're eroding at four inches a year, 100 years is 100 times four, that's four feet, right? Is that right?
Four.
Four.
Every three years.
400, yeah.
400.
400 inches.
Yeah.
Which equates into however many feet that is.
35.
35 feet, so.
Right.
I'm okay with the wording the Commissioner Morrow suggested, 100 times the annual erosion rate, plus 50 feet.
I agree.
All right, Kevin, we're, there's three, three of us here that agree to that, Mr. Commissioner Morrow's statement. We're going to change the 50 to 100. We're going to change the 20 to 50.
Okay.
And we're going to move on.
All right, well, but we got to back up a minute.
Where?
Because it gives you two options. A setback specified in a required engineering geologist's report. Now, if a geologist comes and says, eh, I don't know if I like that, although you do have the reference to the greatest setback. If that's the case, do you really need I at all, and just go, if you really need the, the little Roman numeral one at all, or just go?
Let's make, uh, let's make, let's make two, one, and strike Roman numeral one.
Does that work for everybody?
Kevin?
The greatest, the greatest setback, yes. I'm fine with striking number one, and just going with the wording in number two.
Okay.
All right, so then you will adjust the wording in A.
Yes, I shall.
Excuse me, I'm probably driving you crazy with this microphone, huh?
Only, only when you rub your elbows against it.
Okay. Um.
Wow.
That took us quite a ways.
Yeah.
Now, on page seven of 23, and this is one that Commissioner St. Marie brought up, where it talks about restoration and replacement of existing structures. In here, it's identified as, as one year that you can replace something within a year, but in other places in the code, it talks, like in liquefaction landslide, it talks about 18 months. So, and I, I think you raised a good point, Diana. I mean, I think this is, it's, there should be consistency. So, I guess my question is, do you want to go with the year, or do you want to go with 18 months?
My opinion on this, because we want it not dropped, we want it to get down, and due to the alternate weather patterns and whatnot that we have around here, specifically around the coast, I, I think 18 months really gives a better rehabilitation and construction window than 12 does, because, you know, you might like October, and if you plan it right, you'll be able to hit two Octobers to do work in, to where with 12 months, you miss the window. I like the 18 months.
Well, we're not giving them the time to start and complete. We're giving the, the time at which they must start to do the work. They can take six years to finish, start, either within 12 months or within 18 months.
Yeah, and Kevin, you're absolutely right. That's kind of what I was getting, is that if there's a window to do the actual start of whatever that project's going to be, you only have one shot at it in 12 months. In 18 months, you might have two good opportunities to start.
Well, let me say that I really don't have an opinion on whether we use 12 or 18 months, as long as we're consistent through the document.
I agree.
And I agree with Commissioner Brazil. I think the chances of missing your window to start would be pretty easy to do with one year, and I'm, I'm okay with 18 months.
Okay.
What, what would be considered an absolute minimum of having begun restoration? I mean, is it just going out there with your spade and putting, putting a stake in the ground, this is where my new foundation's going to be, or?
Well, you couldn't put that, we would, we would tie it to a permit, any, any kind of building permit you would need to get.
As building permit is good for how long?
Oh, gosh, I don't know. I don't.
I'd add the word, in front of replacement or restoration, to cover Commissioner Morrow's concern, I'd add the word significant, because, yeah, they could go out and drive the stake, or they could put up, you know, the porta potties or something, and that's actually the work commencing, but.
Or, another alternative to that would be to say, replacement or restoration, as, as authorized, or as determined by the building official?
No, I, I've changed my mind on that. I'm, I'm okay with the way it is currently worded. We just have to choose the date. And I'm okay with 18 months.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with 18 months.
Okay. Well, that being said, I'm, I'm diving ahead a little bit, but Commissioner St. Marie noted that in the wildfire hazards and tsunami standards, there was no requirement, or there was no criteria for replacement or restoration. And I said here, when these two hazard overlays are answered, review, this matter should be discussed. We could probably discuss it now. For consistency, would you want to see that added to those other two sections?
Because we have none in the other section.
Right, in tsunami and hazard, wildlife hazards.
I would think that we want to be consistent and, and apply that.
Okay, I'm going to put add to wildfire.
Yeah, I'm always in favor of consistency.
Okay. All right. I'm not going to go back through everything we just talked about. There was too much, but I think I've captured your notes, and we have the video and John's notes, so. Okay, good deal.
Well, you could shoot out these questionable pages, not the whole thing, but you could shoot those out before our next meeting, right? Can we just look at it and say, yeah, that's how I remembered?
If that's what you guys would like me to do. Do you want me to do that, or?
Only if it helps you.
Only, only the changes, yes.
And that meeting would be before you're bringing it to us with the resolution.
Yeah, and I'm going to be bringing these to you in two weeks with the changes. So, that means that, but you know, even if we're, I'm afraid, I'm afraid I'm going to slip, this is going to slip away in my mind. I have to send it to you and wait for the comments to come back on the revisions. But we, if it's, if it's in here incorrectly at the meeting, we can change it at the meeting.
That's fair.
Before John signs it, it'll be fixed. Okay.
Whatever is best to fast-track it.
Okay.
But still have an opportunity to review once.
Okay. This next section is on liquefaction. Um.
4:30.
I guess, before I wander through all of these, maybe a more efficient way to do this would be, anything that jumped out at you guys when you were reading this, if, as not acceptable, if you would want to pull that out, and then we could talk about it? Because we have an hour left, and we might be able to get through a little more if we do it that way. Or I can go through each one, but it's up to you.
I want to be covered and fairly thorough.
Okay.
I, I think we ought to go through them briefly.
Okay.
But it's four, it's 4:30 now, and what I'd like to do is take a pause for a five-minute break.
Okay.
So, at this time, we're pausing for a five-minute break, and we'll see you back at 4:35.
Thank you.
What does county government do? Well, I don't really know, but I think they might have something to do with the roads, or maybe the schools. You don't really see them. have something to do with the roads, or maybe the schools. You don't really see them very much, and you don't hear from the county government too much.
Hi, I'm Eric Schmidt, and I live in Washington County, Oregon. And it looks like I just got my property tax bill from the county. Like a lot of taxpayers, I'm not all that fond of paying taxes, especially property taxes. But I do know that my property taxes help Washington County provide vital public services for my family and my neighbors. Washington County is one of the four original Oregon counties, formed in 1843 as Tewolite County. The territorial legislature changed the name in 1849 to honor our nation's first president. There were nineteen other Oregon counties providing vital public services before Oregon became a state in 1859. In 21st century Oregon, there are thirty-six counties, each with a history as compelling and interesting as my home county, and each with as an important mission as my home county. Oregon counties are an important part of the delivery of vital public services. As partners with the state of Oregon, Oregon counties ensure that Oregonians can live together in comfort and safety.
I'm not really sure that what the state does, and what the cities do, and what the counties do, how they're, how the things are separated.
What do you know about county government?
Not a whole lot.
Hmm, I don't get too involved with that county government thing, so I'm not really a good one to ask about the county government.
Do you think it's common that people don't know too much about county government?
It's very common.
I think it is.
County government is about building better communities. It's close to the people, it's right there on the ground, it's accountable to the people.
It's such an avenue for accessing services, protecting services, and providing services that we all take for granted.
It's the government closest to the people. It's a place where folks will call and complain about a pothole. It's a place where we can sit down and find solutions that work locally.
And I don't think people realize how much county government does, because we do a lot of the hidden items that people don't see, or don't realize, is actually a government function.
Do you know what county government does for you? The roads, water, things like that, land?
I notice the law enforcement, the public safety issues, the road department, planning, public health.
I'm pleased with what they're doing.
Absolutely, they affect you.
So what do counties do? The Association of Oregon Counties has produced this video to provide some answers to that oft-asked question. Let's begin with the property tax bill. Seventeen cents of every dollar Oregonians pay in property tax, on the average, goes to support the functions of their county governments. The rest of the property taxes go to cities, special districts, bonds, and of course, schools. Counties make good use of their share of those property taxes. Government does a lot. The green boxes on this chart show the services the state of Oregon provides exclusively. The blue boxes show the services Oregon counties provide exclusively. The red boxes show the services the state and the counties provide together. It's quite a list. On that list is law enforcement. Back in the days before Oregon was a state, counties made sure there were jails for lawbreakers, and jailers to keep an eye on the lawbreakers. These days, every Oregon county has an elected sheriff. In most counties, the sheriff hires deputies who patrol the county, arresting bad guys, keeping the peace, and providing aid during emergencies.
The sheriff is the chief law enforcement officer of the county, so they're responsible for all the law enforcement services that occur in the county. There's also some other statutorily mandated requirements that include the issuing of concealed handgun permits, civil, which is court enforcement, the processing and serving of various court papers such as restraining orders, eviction notices, foreclosures, et cetera. Also, in some counties, emergency management is statutorily required, and that's placed with the sheriff's office, and that's the way it occurs in Benton County. The jail is also statutorily mandated, and is the responsibility of the sheriff's office as well. So we have many different and varied responsibilities, not just law enforcement.
Mary Paul Tuiter will be out at the county.
The American sheriff is the only one that answers directly to the citizens. We are the people's cops, and it's because we are elected, and the only elected member of law enforcement in the United States, in fact, in the world. The American sheriff is the only one that answers directly to the citizens that take the interest in voting and participating.
Another important function of county government is community corrections, parole and probation.
Community corrections really provides all the services that are for probation or parole. So, in Yumitilla County, for instance, we supervise about a thousand offenders on any given day, and across the state of Oregon, it's thirty thousand plus. We have some results that would indicate that our recidivism rate is lower now, since the counties took over, than it was when the state operated the program.
In the days before statehood, counties also provided a form of help for people in need. This now-popular gathering spot in Monoma County was once the county's poor farm. Today, Oregon counties provide for people in need in many, many ways. One of those ways is the vital public service of public health. In addition to making sure that restaurants are safe to eat in and children get their shots, Oregon counties also make sure that those with mental health needs and challenges, and those who are addicted to drugs and alcohol, have the help they need to recover and lead productive lives.
Government at work every day. We're always working with our commissioners. If we have an outbreak, if we have a foodborne illness, we're tracking that down and trying to find out what the cause was, so we can make sure and keep people healthy.
Oregon counties provide public and mental health services because those services are best provided at the local level. The state of Oregon recognizes how important the local delivery of vital public services is, how cost-effective it can be, and how it produces results for those who need the services.
Do you guys need your flu shots?
This often involves an intense deliberative process, needs versus resources.
The more people that are vaccinated, the less amount, amount of disease there's going to be out there. Part of the reason we're doing this clinic is to help children in the area be able to get access to that vaccine. So, not everybody has health insurance or access to a doctor, so we're here to kind of help those people out.
Most motorists and truckers don't really pay attention to whether they're on a highway, road, or street that was built and maintained by the state, a county, or a city.
Very cool.
Okay, we're re-convincing the County Planning Commission meeting at this particular time, February second, two thousand seventeen. It is four forty.
All right. I got a lot of comments on this section from...
We're talking about liquefaction?
Liquefaction, yes, from Ms. Colby Hanks. And I, she is, she's the planner for the city of Brookings.
Yes.
And she shared with me that, this is not the first time I've heard this, Mr. John Bischoff, who's a former planning director there, has also shared with me that the Harbor Hills areas, it's really sloped, there's some liquefaction issues, et cetera, but the, that the city of Brookings years ago, when they added it to the urban growth boundary, part of the addition of this property was to be able to accommodate the potential for new housing within a twenty-year timeframe, correct?
From the city's perspective, yes.
Yes. So, on paper, that's what's required, that's what the state of Oregon requires you to have in your urban growth boundary, is to identify an area where you could have, you could develop housing for the next twenty years. This happened many years ago, I understand. So, when looking at the liquefaction, liquefaction maps and the criteria, she brought up the point that if you include areas that are in what's called a moderate-risk area, you're going to eat into that, that twenty-year potential for housing.
City Brookings growth, twenty-year projection, urban growth boundary.
Yes. So, she asked about this, and, and suggested that this would be applicable to high-risk areas only and not moderate-risk areas. And I talked to DLCD about this, and they felt that if the, if development happened in the moderate-risk areas, but it complied with all the criteria for a geologic hazard report, and all the other things that are in this section, all the other criteria, that that would be workable, and still then enable the city to be able to count that urban growth boundary area.
And that's what, the same, that same situation would pertain to all three cities within the county. And the urban growth area up, up north there, Kevin, probably encompasses quite a bit of the urban growth boundary?
Yes. Now, the way I've seen this type of situation handled in Tucson, where you had some really ancient areas that had been zoned before got Arizona to the state, was they took those sections and handled them separately, so that if they need special consideration like Harbor Hills, there's a section for Harbor Hills alone. And that way, you could stay with high risk everywhere, except the Harbor, Brookings, Harbor Hills area.
You mean moderate, moderate risk everywhere except? Because I think what Carolyn's stating is that we're, we would not be changing the requirements in the high risk.
Well, no, what we're, what we would be doing in order to accommodate Brookings' urban growth boundaries is we would reduce the risk assessment to moderate throughout the county. Currently, it would be at high risk. And to prevent, prevent Brookings from losing its adequate urban growth boundaries, we'd change it throughout the county to moderate-risk growth.
That's not what I heard, Kevin. What I, what I heard is...
Oh, whoa, you're absolutely right. I'm sorry. We're going from moderate risk, which covers more area, to high risk, which covers a smaller area, but preserves Brookings' projected urban growth.
That's, that's, yeah, right.
Sorry.
That's okay.
And DLCD was pretty comfortable with that?
They were okay with that. That, that doesn't mean, though, that the, the... I mean, that doesn't mean that you're, you're just letting go of this whole idea
No.
of a liquefaction area. It, it just means you're going to apply it to the areas where there is the highest risk possible. So, and this also really kind of applies to the landslide section, we'll get to that as well, so.
But is it?
But I guess what I'm saying is I'm not comfortable with changing the standards for the entire county just based on Brookings. I mean, we can do that, I can certainly be out voter, but I, I'm not comfortable with that. As opposed to calling Brookings out and doing it separately. We don't have time for that, never mind.
Well, actually, you do, you do. You could, you could frame it that way. I'd want to talk to DLCD about it. But you could say that this section in Brookings shall apply to all development within the high-risk areas. In all other parts of the county, it would apply to everyone. But then it kind of begs the question about uniformity, you know?
Right.
So, you know.
And we're talking, and we're talking about only portions on the map that are contained within the existing UGB. We're saying to Brookings. If it's outside of the UGB and Harbor Hills or whatever, is, this would pertain to the moderate sections as-is.
Well, actually, it doesn't say that. It just says all development on lands within high-risk areas. But I think your point is, it should say all lands within high-risk areas in the urban growth boundary.
Within the urban growth boundary. And that way, if there's, when they go and they try to enlarge your urban growth boundary, any areas that are designated as they are high-risk or moderate, they would need to, then they would consider those areas non-billable in their projection of the new urban growth boundary. Does that make sense? No?
It does. I think we would, if you went that route, though, we'd need to have these maps modified to outline the urban growth boundary, to make it very clear. Because if you look at them, if you look at these maps, unfortunately, the numbering didn't come off on the maps.
What page?
Page twelve.
Look on the back of page eight of twelve. That's the first map, and this is North County.
Which is Port Orford.
And Kevin, help me out here, because I don't know the urban growth boundary by heart in this area.
I, I do not myself in Port Orford. I'd have to bring it up.
Well, I'm in the urban growth boundary. The urban growth boundary on Port Orford is not that large. It's mostly to the south and southeast. There's a small urban growth boundary to the north. There's nothing essentially to the east of the existing city limits. Urban growth boundary goes up almost to...
I tried to pull it up from here, but I have no cell service out of this particular room. And yesterday, when I tried to do it, the county GIS system was non-operable.
I mean, looking, looking at this map from, you know, the very fuzzy detail, it doesn't appear to be any moderate areas identified in Port Orford.
Yeah, Jesse, can you just move it a little bit wider?
It actually looks like the city, or the point out there.
Some of this is moderate, right in here.
Yeah, that's, that's a park, though. That's not...
Yeah, that, that's...
How much area in Brookings are we talking about here? If we were to exclude the moderate from the urban growth boundary?
Well, that would be on page twelve of twelve. There's a whole section along the Pistol River, but that's not in the urban growth boundary. That would stay. Uh, that's not Brookings. Page twelve.
Historic. There it is, yeah.
Well, part of what she's talking about is, part of this area here mainly, this is what's kind of, this whole thing here is referred to Harbor Hills.
Right.
But urban growth boundary cuts across right about here. So, it'd be a lot of that. It goes up to South Bank here a little bit, if I remember.
I can't find the map online of the, of the urban growth boundary in Brookings.
If you went to the county GIS system?
Well, the county has published a map for Globe Beach out of their GIS system, for Globe Beach and Port Orford, but not for Brookings. The GIS system kicks me out all the time.
Yeah, do you have the PDF? The PDF does not show the urban growth boundary.
No, it doesn't.
The, yeah, Kevin, the last couple of days, I tried to use the GIS system for, for some stuff, and it, it's, it's not working either. The old one, the good one, which was the old one. Would there be a way, Carolyn, that we can leave everything as-is, but with some type of a statement that would include that adjustment within the existing urban growth boundaries? And that would apply to all three cities?
In Brookings, since I do have a PDF of UGB...
Yeah?
I don't know where Harbor Hills is located.
It would be basic, if you're looking at that, it would be south, it would be in Harbor, south of the Chetco River.
Okay.
East of Highway one oh one, is what they're concerned about.
Well, if, there was a big chunk down there, which is almost half of the area in the urban growth boundary.
Yeah, would, everything, she's mainly concerned about east of the highway, south of the Chetco River.
Okay, that is, that is a considerable chunk of their urban growth boundary, so if we change to high risk, we can go to high risk. I'm just trying to estimate this by what I've seen on the PDF, but that is...
How much, how much of that, Kevin, is medium?
Oh, God, now I have to look at other maps?
No. Oh, yeah, yeah, look at the other map. But overlay your urban growth... But overlay your urban growth boundary with the liquefaction map.
It was, it was Donna's assessment that if you just had the supply to, to high risk, it would not be, it wouldn't threaten that 20-year horizon in the urban growth boundary.
So what we'd want to do is to have wording to modi, to modify.
Well, almost none of it is...
Yeah, most, most of what you're looking at is high risk, right?
Um, yeah, I'm looking at the map included with our packet right now.
Okay.
And, uh, no, actually-
Most of it's...
Very little of it is high risk. The high-risk areas are right along the Chetco and the smaller river toward down. Uh, the majority of that area, that's right along 101.
East, east...
On either side of 101, that's, that's a moderate risk. About half of their urban growth, the affected area of their urban growth boundary, about half of it is at low risk. And the high risk runs along the rivers and right along the coast. There's not a lot of high risk in there.
So I'm...
According to the map.
So that sinkhole they had a few years back, was that in a moderate-risk area?
Two years ago?
Yeah.
Or a year ago?
Yeah, down by the, I'm guessing it's like right around here.
Yeah, it would've been right, yeah, right about there. Yeah, it could've been.
So, I mean, that was a significant event in a moderate area.
Yeah, but...
But that had to do with culverts that failed.
It had, it had to do with poor construction and backfill at the time they put the highway in and the culvert.
That exceeded their life expectancy and...
So it was not a natural...
So it was not a liquefaction?
It was not a natural. That was, yeah, that, that was a poor engineering application when they put it in. That was designed to fail.
But it wasn't a natural event?
It was not a natural event. So tell me again, Carolyn, what, what does the city want to do? How, how do they want to word that?
Just how I have it here.
They want to move into high-risk area.
They want to have this, these regulations apply to high-risk areas, not moderate risk.
Not moderate.
Yeah.
In my opinion, it makes sense for it to, to be only to high risk, because the moderate risk is going to have to comply with all the other stuff in order to be allowed to do anything. But that's, that's my opinion.
Yes, Port Orford has its urban growth boundaries and very little moderate risk because it's all high-risk. So I wouldn't have a problem with it.
What about Gold Beach? What about the Sixes? It's not...
Gold Beach actually has more in the high-risk area than it's...
All right. I mean, we're only talking about those, those three zones?
No. Well, yes.
As far as urban growth is concerned, right?
I guess, I'm hearing two things, and Carolyn can straighten me out on this. If we don't apply this to moderate risk, only to high risk, that'd be county-wide.
Yes.
And what, and I think that there's some value in this in the moderate-risk area. So I guess the happy medium would be that it would not apply to moderate-risk territories within the existing urban growth boundaries.
I can try that, and I'll run it by, I'll run it by Dave Perry. Just, I'm, I'm worried that he's going to talk about, want to talk about, you know, equity inside or versus outside the urban growth boundary. If, if I'm in the urban growth boundary, but my neighbor 100 feet away is not, you know, I'm not subject to a requirement, but he is, because, you know, he's, he's in a moderate-risk area, but I'm in a, and I'm in a moderate-risk area, but he has to, he has to comply with all this, but I don't. I, I just, I'm a little nervous about that.
But we have different standards in the urban growth boundaries already, do we not?
No. I don't, I don't think you do. Not, not criteria for development.
But don't we have joint management agreements on all growth boundaries?
Yeah, but that doesn't, that doesn't address development criteria. That just addresses who gets to review things.
No, we, Kevin, I think you're right, because I think sometimes in the road department requirements of one thing or another, if you're in the urban growth boundary, you can do one thing. If you're outside the urban growth boundary, you can do something else. So I think we do have some county criteria planned within if you're in or out.
But that's related.
The answer, the answer to DLCD is that the guy that's outside that has to comply to those, the good news is he is not in the urban growth boundary.
Well, let me play this another way.
And I guess I'd say that off the record.
With the, too late. The road standards are related to public facilities, not private land, okay? So...
Well, it affects the private land.
It may affect it, but when we...
And the developable area of private land.
But public facilities are, it's not like there's one property owner and another property owner, and this guy gets to do something that this guy doesn't have to do.
The one guy, the one guy don't have to give up as much of his property for easement as the other guy does.
But, but it's for a public use, not a private use. And I think that's how governments kind of see that being okay.
The guy that has to maybe give up more, he's giving up more of his private land for public use than the other guy that has public, or private use of his own land.
Well, I think...
But if we go back a bit, we're not saying that you cannot develop within an area with a moderate-risk liquefaction, where you say you have to meet criteria in order to develop there. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
But I don't see any reason to change it.
Well...
Unless Brookings is now saying that everything at Harbor Hills could not be developed because it could not be engineered to meet standards.
No, they're not saying that. Otherwise, they would've said, "Don't include Harbor Hills at all," which is what we talked about last time, remember?
Yes.
And that's when Donna went back and took a look at Harbor Hills, and she looked at these liquefaction, because she didn't have them before the meeting. She looked at it, and she said, "We could still meet our, our housing requirements if you exclude the moderate, but include the high risk."
But there's nothing that we have, the documents, they couldn't meet their housing requirements even if we leave it at moderate, correct? That's just a thing.
Yeah, that would be my question to them for sure.
Well, I mean, I could go back and ask her to show me, but I, I could do that. But I mean, given she's the planner for the city of Brookings, and she knows her urban growth boundary and her, I, if you want me to have her justify it, I'll ask her to do that, but I just...
I mean, the alternative, the alternative is that if, if she comes back and says, "Hey, this is going to limit our ability to meet whatever their requirement is," which I don't know if they have to change it or not, but for them to expand the urban growth boundary, it's going to encroach, or they would attempt highly to encroach on valuable farm in existing ag land.
Well, that puts them in a little bit of a bind then, doesn't it?
Well, the question I'm asking, John, is if you can build in a moderate-risk-
Area.
-liquefaction area with engineering that meets the criteria.
Why not build there?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, if we've taken that out, it's just that we said you've got additional requirements to build in here.
Right. And it becomes a little more challenging for the contractor, and this city's perspective probably isn't. That's not what they would want to do. But I'm kind of, at this point, Carolyn, I think it should stay as it is.
That's my inclination as well.
And that eliminates, or that just leaves in the high-risk-
Yes, that we've...
...identified, then I agree with that.
Okay.
With engineering, proper engineering, you're complying with all the other areas. Moderate risk should be...
Okay.
Okay. And we will change, we will change the structure floor area to area. We'll strike the word floor in, on page four to AI.
Sounds good.
And I believe anywhere where we shoot this document, we'd like to do that.
Okay.
So to be fair, we are not considering the suggestion out of Coby Hanks there.
And I think we are.
We are. You would be, you would be applying this section to areas within high-risk areas, not moderate-risk.
But not moderate throughout the county.
Right.
No, I think that's what we just said we didn't want.
No, we don't, we don't want to do that. I don't want to do that.
I do not want.
Okay.
I want to have moderate and high-risk under the same standards.
And let them build to the criteria on a moderate area.
No, why, why can't Brookings build to these standards in a moderate area? And they're going to be engineered, the engineering might be different than a high, high-risk area. But the standards are there to be applied, and if they're in the urban growth boundary-
Or not.
Or not, the standards are there.
Treating everybody equally.
And it should not, it should not affect the urban growth boundaries itself. It just affects the, the way they approach construction in that urban growth area.
Okay.
If Ms. Coby Hanks has some data that shows that a significant amount of that land could not be built, no matter how you engineered it, I'd be willing to discuss it again before it goes to the board.
Okay.
But after that kind of detailed information, I wouldn't make a change to it.
So I'm against accepting her suggestion.
Okay, so...
I am also against.
Okay, so if, if you don't want us to accept the suggestion, it would just say, "This section shall apply to all lands identified as subject to liquefaction."
Yes.
So I'm sorry, it should say, "To all development on lands within areas," and take out the word high risk. Okay.
So theoretically, that could give them still more land? If, if it could be engineered, even though it's high-risk, or if it could be engineered, you're allowed?
Yes.
I don't think that's how she sees it, but I'm not going to speak for her. Yeah.
I mean, is there, is there a requirement that an urban growth boundary have a certain percentage of land that is-
Available for housing.
Yeah, completely available without any restrictions such as the liquefaction.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think it says that today.
And there's no, there's no burden for singer.
Yeah. And it's supposed to be, what, a 20-year growth area? So if we go back the last 10 years, when we went over all this stuff before, the growth in the last 10 years, I think we're still good for another 20 years without a problem. They got all that borax area that they chose still not to develop. That's within the urban growth boundary. That's all developable land.
Okay.
So I think they still, it'd be another 10 years out, I would think, before there's any encroachment onto the UGB.
Okay, the next section is on page two of 12. This was 2E. Again, this is removing the reference to a liquefaction hazard permit and replacing the language for the standard permits that we use, basically saying that you have to comply with this to get through the process. You have to comply with the standards here, not that you would have a new type of permit.
I think this is consistent with everything we've already said.
Okay.
And I'm okay with the suggested wording.
Okay.
With John's comment that we have to remove the word floor, 50% of the structures area.
Okay, I got that. I got that. Number 4A on page two of 12, it was suggested that the last sentence, it says, "Not withstanding the provisions of Article 4, as necessary to comply with this requirement, any required setback may be reduced by up to 50% without a variance." That was in the original language. But what's been added here is the words "from a property line," and that's just a technical cleanup.
Right.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Subsection seven, we added the words "or restoration" of existing structures where it talks about... Oh! I didn't need to repeat that, did I?
Orage.
No, I didn't. Okay. But there, I did add some words referencing the high liquef, high-risk liquefaction area in B. And this is one that talked about the 18 months that we talked about a little bit ago.
Yeah.
And then I added a, a requirement for compliance to, tying this to a certificate of compliance shown in a, a section that follows this.
Well, number one, this is still on page two of 12.
Uh-huh.
We have that little subsection I-
Uh-huh.
-replacement for, so to the subsection that's living to a building or buildings not larger than the damaged building.
Mm-hmm.
Is that consistent with no, not, with no greater area?
Yeah, we, we discussed this. I think we were, we liked not having definitions.
Are we done with the staff comments? Oh, we are.
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
Well, this is talking about replacement, not additions to existing buildings. So in other words...
You're replacing what you had.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
It's a replacement.
I understand. Thank you.
All right. And then the next one says replacement or restoration.
Right.
As far as the timeframe, the 18 months. Okay.
And then, that's pretty much it. And I think I noted there's multiple subsections that I, I'm not calling out here that reference a liquefaction hazard permits, where I use similar languages like you've seen here. And that's it for that section.
I think we're good.
Well, under paragraph B up there on two of 12, we still have the "in a high-risk liquefaction hazard area." Is that appropriate there? Or do we just say "in a liquefaction"?
Yeah, that, well, wait, wait a minute. Let's see. Let's see. Let me place it with a... Oh, that's a staff comment. That was a staff comment for me. So that's, that's not in the...
So it stays in hazard reach?
No, but no, it doesn't. You're right. You're right. It, on, on the, on page one of 12 at the bottom, where it talks, it says, number I, maintenance, repair, et cetera, da, 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 semicolon, "as long as the addition, area of addition is outside the high-risk liquefaction area." You need to take out the word "high-risk" to be consistent with subsection two above. Good catch.
Okay, go down to subsection seven. That's on page two of 12. And...
Oh, there it is again. There it is again.
Yeah.
Okay, in A, that needs to go, removed. Okay, good. And I think that's, that's all I have for that.
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Do you want to start on landslide? It's 5:14. I don't know if we're going to be able to get through it, the whole thing, but...
Well...
It's kind of, it's pretty short.
We, we might, we might... We, we might, we might be able to do this, and I think landslide and liquefaction, there's a lot of commonality.
Right.
Uh, between these two, um, again, I, let, let's go ahead and continue here on this. Let's try it. All right, we're now looking at landslide hazard standards, three point two five five.
This subsection two, um, I want to talk to DLCD about, um, what's been proposed for this prehistoric standard, prehistoric classification. Again, this addresses the, the limitation on the amount of land that would be available for development in the urban growth boundary. So the landslide map has different categories. I'm trying to find one here that's not too hard to read. Well, they're all hard to read, but I.
Was the prehistoric areas not already there when they established urban growth boundaries?
Well, I'm sure they.
Or did they just not recognize it?
I'm sure they were, but I'm, but I, what wasn't there was the specific criteria, so on, on how you can develop that particular area.
Bless you.
So I'd like to talk to DLCD about this before you guys make a decision, if that'd be okay.
Okay, that makes, additional information on your part is very valuable.
Okay. Um, this next one, this next one, um, again, is talking about, um, requirements versus a permit. On subsection three, it, originally it said landslide hazard permit.
Uh huh.
So now it says requirements. And, um, subsection three A, it was incorrectly noted, um, the reference to section 1.034, um, it was, there was a typo in there. I fixed that.
Okay.
And then again, it talked about a permit, we're replacing that with the reference to other permits that are already acquired, already required.
I'm okay with those.
Subsection three B, again, um, the addition of farm use, we talked about that earlier, and, um, I, I think what I could do is go back and modify it the way we discussed on the other section.
In the previous section. I think we're good with that.
Um, section three B, paragraph one.
Uh huh.
Divided C two to extend the existing floor area of the structure. Do we strike floor there again?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, subsection three D, three. Again, I'm going back to reference to other permits and not a requirement for a new permit. And this also talks about things being kept on file with the community development department. I can modify that as per the other, how we were doing it in the other section, I think it was.
I would be okay with that.
And we, and all of these, we're talking about going forward with recording them against the, um.
The property.
The property, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, subsection six, the certificate of compliance, um, this was important. I want, I want to make sure that before the building official, um, signs this off, he checks to see that all the conditions that were in the geology report have been addressed, because a lot of those are structural things that I'm not going to catch as a planner, because I'm not looking at building plans, I'm looking at site plan, floor plan elevations. So this is kind of important for a sec.
I think that makes sense.
I agree with that.
For clarity.
All right, next.
Um, and then the next one was, I added the word or replacement of existing structures. This is kind of a.
I agree with that.
Yeah, well, you can either, yeah.
Oh, I see, I see.
Yeah. Maybe there's a better way to frame that.
And restoration and or replacement.
Yeah. Yeah, we could do it that way. Yeah, that would be, that'd be even simpler. It could be and/or replacement, and it's strike out or replacement of or replacement. I like that. I like that.
Okay.
Um, let's see.
Um, on subsection seven, are we there yet?
Um, there is no subsection seven.
Yeah.
On two of seventeen, so subsection seven, that's where we're talking about restoration.
Oh, that is, you're right, I'm sorry. It is, yeah.
Um, it should not have the effect of rendering any existing used structure nonconforming. Should that be legal existing used structure if they had an illegal structure before, or is that implied?
No, I like adding that. I think that's good. Is that okay with the rest of the commission?
Yes.
Okay.
We're good.
All right, yeah.
Therefore, A, I guess, both B and B.
Yeah, B, we use lawfully established building.
Okay.
That would provide consistency if you use lawfully instead of legally in A.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I missed that.
Consistency, can use, use lawfully instead of legally on the, on the previous.
In section, section A.
The meaning would be consistent that way.
Yeah, if you drop down to the next page, Director Johnson, uh, paragraph B says replacement or restoration of a lawfully established building or structure, we're just going to support it?
Right.
It's a pretty word, too. Okay. Um, I think that's it, and I will bring these back to you in a resolution for, as modified and attachments to a resolution format. The other thing that I, I want to do that I didn't write in here, but I want to do this, is make sure that the maps are included in the zoning code itself. I, I, it was very shocking to me when we arrived here and found there's no maps in the zoning code.
At all.
So I'm, I'm really gonna, that's really what I want to do, is I want to include these maps in the zoning code. And the other thing we're going to have to do is figure out how to, well, that's, that's something I'll have to do. We need to have these married into our GIS system, we're going to need all these layers, so Joe Public can look at this stuff, too.
Some of that was there.
Well.
Okay, we're, uh, where we are, guys, is that we're going to be left here with one section, section three dot two five six wildfire hazards, that we're going to need to address that at a different date. And, uh, those of you who had that provided, Carolyn, the input on that section will be very helpful, but there might be, we may not have time to go through the discussion on that section.
No, but would, would you be okay? Well, I think what I'll do is I will bring that section, section to you attached to a resolution of adoption, and any changes you want to make that day, you can move to approve the resolution subject to the changes that you have directed during that meeting. And then I would clean it up, and I would give it to your, your chair for signature afterwards, if you feel comfortable with that. And if you wouldn't feel comfortable that night doing it that way.
Then I don't sign it.
It's no big deal. You can come back again.
You guys, you guys good with that? Kevin?
Now, let, let me check this. Um, you would make the changes that we may want to make in our next meeting, and then you'd hand it to John for him to read it and say, yeah, that's right?
Not that night. I would.
No.
Yeah.
It's work over to the board.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
And this isn't going to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Because when you adopted your new procedures, remember that, that you worked on last year? It includes some kind of, I think a little more.
I'd agree with that.
Formal language saying, when you are recommending something to the board, it's going to go to them in a, in a, in a resolution that you've signed, it's very clear, not just a set of minutes or a, or a planning director telling them.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I'm very comfortable with, uh, Commissioner Brazil being the one who proves it before it goes on to the board.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
I would be able to prove it as well as John can.
And if any of you have more comments on wildfire or.
Send them in.
Access management, please send them to me right away. You do, thank you.
Okay, so we will handle section three point two five eight wildfire hazard access management in that way in the future. Our, um, and we're going to meet again here, what, on the, what, 23rd or something?
The 16th.
Who?
The 16th.
16th.
The 16th, in two weeks.
All right, February 16th.
And that's what time?
Uh.
Um, regular time.
Five, 5:00 PM.
5:30.
Yeah, 5:00 PM for me, takes me, you know, takes me 30 minutes to remember. Yes, 5:30 PM. Okay, review, and then the zoning ordinance, section four point oh five zero will be the access management that we will view on that date. Commissioner comments? Um, Commissioner, Commissioner McQ.
I have a headache. I have no comment.
You just got new caps, and you got a headache already?
Oh, yeah.
You gotta go try it out.
Okay, you got anything?
No, nothing.
You're good?
I'm good.
You're good? Um, I have one comment, is that we kind of had discussed this somewhat, and it was my understanding that the planning commission was going to be able to provide some monetary support for a code enforcement officer?
The planning, I'm sorry. Oh, the planning department?
Department.
Um.
Any input on that?
Well, well, I mean, I'm going to have to pull my budget out and see what, what we've got. We are, had already made a commitment of about $5,000, so, but we'll see where that goes.
Okay, thank you. That was, and other than that, all I have to say, I want to say good work, everybody, and we're continuing supporting Carolyn as much as we can, and I want to thank John for taking great notes, and we'll leave it up to any director comments.
Are you going to say something about the forest grazing?
Yes, that was going to be part of my comments. You have all finished your review of the forest grazing and ag sections, um, and while you did not adopt a resolution, um, I'd like to go ahead and prepare one for you. You finished all the work. Um, but in the meantime, I didn't get the measure 56 notices out, but we did adopt something in the procedures section that there will be a resolution, so.
Okay.
If I could present that to you, um, that would really be good, because I'd like it to send this in a package to be very consistent. So, um, the other thing I wanted to ask.
I would, I'd be good to, I'd be good to review that so that it can be prepared to go forward with that same package.
Okay. But the intent would not be for you to review all the regulations again.
I understand.
We're all done with that.
I understand.
Um, the other question I had is about this meeting and future meeting times. Did this meeting time work out for all of you?
Yes.
It did today?
Yeah.
Okay.
It did today, yes.
My schedule is. Kind of all over?
All over, you're a psycholog at a time, I think that's what it is.
Yeah, the more lead time.
The reason I'm asking is, is, I mean, if the commission wanted to move your regular meeting times to this meeting time, you could do that, but I'm trying to be mindful of the fact that people work, and, and we, we do meet just once a month, we're not meeting normally twice a month.
Right, right, right.
This is a little out of the ordinary.
So there's a suggestion for us to think about, instead of having the meetings, uh, the normal scheduled meetings be at, at 5:30, to maybe move them in the afternoon at 3:00 if, if that works with most of our commissioners, with all of our commissioners.
Just think about it.
If, um, so maybe.
Well, we also have to think about public attendance, but, you know, I would, I would not object to moving that, but we just actually treat you for public.
And that's true, and that's part of the reason why we used to have them at 7:00, right?
Yeah, I, I don't want to, I don't want to bend over backwards to public too far, but, yeah, I could, we could move it up, we just have to think about that, too.
Well, I think a lot of times if we don't have something necessarily in front of us for real public input, and we're doing more of a, well, I don't know, good, good point, Kevin.
We moved them to 3:30 and four over, that was to accommodate our planner who's having trouble driving at nights like me. Uh, you know, 3:30 seems to work out. People attend the planning commission meetings up here, 3:00 maybe a little early because you have to get kids home from school maybe, but 3:30, you know, we can talk about it more.
All right, it's an open conversation, Carolyn.
Yeah, and not all of you, your commissioners are here, so, but I did want you to kind of think about it.
How many are not here because of the start time?
Well, I didn't hear from any of them. I didn't get a response, and that's not unusual. Well, I did hear from Commissioner Bonifat, because she had, she had something going, so, but the others, I didn't hear from.
Mr. Freeman, is there one of these recorded?
Probably, he probably is.
He'll be back, he just sent out an email to all of us, he'll be back.
Oh, okay.
Um, okay, good. Any additional comments from, uh, from the director?
Thank you all. I, your com, it really helps me. You guys are really into this, and it really, it really keeps me, keeps me on my toes, but it's all really good. I appreciate it, thank you. Good collaboration.
If you have any questions, it's on my blue tag on that page, just email me.
Okay, I will. On that note.
On that, on that note, I'm Chair President Commissioner Brazil for Curry County Planning, and the February 2nd, 2017 meeting is being adjourned at 5:30.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Good job. Thank you, Charles. How did we do? We do okay this time?
Nope.
I wasn't coughing into the mic too much.